...of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The district-wide school safety plan must be made available for public comment at least thirty days prior to adoption by the school board. The school board may adopt the plan only after at least one public hearing has been held, which provides for the participation of school personnel, parents, students, and other interested parties. Amendments to Education Law 2801A require the district-wide safety plans to be made available for public comment. However, to comply with the confidentiality provisions of this section, public comment is no longer required for the summary of the building-level emergency response plan. If anyone needs clarification of that, that means the specifics at the building level are not included, but the general approach to the district is. An email has been created for the submission of public comments on the district-wide school safety plan as follows. Okay? The first item, 4.02, Community Comments on the District School Safety Plan. Thirty minutes is allotted for any public comments on the plan. If anyone wishes to speak on it now, you may do so. Seeing none, 4.03, Motion to Close Public Hearing and Resume Board Workshop Voting Meeting.
We resolved that the Board of Education does hereby close the public hearing of the district's school safety plan and resumes the board workshop voting meeting.
Do we have a motion? Mrs. Pelton. Second, Mr. Lumia, all in favor? 5.01, Public Comments on Agenda Items. The public comment period is a time slot set aside on the agenda for citizens to address the Board of Education. The Open Meetings Law does not require that citizens be allowed to participate and speak at Board of Education meetings other than public hearings. The law specifies that the public has a right to attend board meetings except for executive sessions. The procedure for public comment is outlined in Board Policy 1230, Citizen Participation. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public comment at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. The maximum time allowed for any one speaker is three minutes. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting are limited to items on the agenda. Persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting must state their name and the specific topic about which they wish to speak. As speakers must limit comments to issues appropriate for public discussion, compliments or complaints about student discipline, specific student issues, or personnel must not be addressed during public comment. Interruption of board discussion is not permitted. In the interest of civility and respect for different points of view, outbursts from the audience, applause, or other types of disturbances or disruptions are not permitted. Under no circumstances will booing be tolerated. The Board of Education recognizes its responsibility to hear and respond to public comment. As stated in Board Policy 1230, the Board is not able to answer questions at the meetings, but welcomes your statements. Any questions from the public should be submitted through the use of the public comment form, which may be obtained online or at the desk with the district clerk. Responses will be provided within two business days on the district's public comment responses page, so that everyone may receive the information. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time about an item on the agenda? Seeing no one, 5.02, Communications Announcements Received by the Board of Education. Mr. Galetta? Mr. Lumia?
I attended a policy committee meeting. Thanks to Dr. Pelton as well as Alberto, the phenomenal work prior to the edge meeting. I'd like to thank personally Dr. Pelton for all the hard work she does. I'm glad she's the chairman. I also attended a long-term developing committee meeting. Today, we had a five-four hour session on strategic planning. A lot to thank Dr. Bunk, Alberto, and his staff, as well as Mr. Wakima for holding the meeting. It was very, very informative, was excellent, and getting it because of the district's money, which is really, really good. They all did a great job, so thank you for that. I also like to thank the principal of Chief Road for inviting me for breakfast that's held every year for, what do you call it, the grandparents? There were four hundred grandparents who attended the breakfast, so it's quite a, that's quite a amount of people, so it's, uh, thank you for having that particular breakfast, and the food was great. That's about it for today.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodman? Mr. Rubin?
I would concur that meeting today was very good. I was part of it there for about the whole time, about three and a half hours, that strategic, long-term planning committee. It was well planned, well thought out. I had the opportunity to go to the, and just visit the Oak Grove School Blood Drive, and kudos to that school for their community involvement and trying to help the community. I attended RCK's Career Day, one wonderful turnout, and it gives the kids some kind of an opportunity, both college and career, of what's out there. Hopefully, that was helpful to them. As your representative, I attended the Dutchess County Voces meeting. Was able to attend several Veterans Days events, John Jay High School Recognition of Veterans, that was a community very touching thing. You were there as well, Madam President. Vassar Road Elementary School had a choir sing-along for the veterans the day before. I'd like to commend Castle Point for sending about thirteen or fifteen of their veterans, wheelchair veterans, to partake, and I know it meant a lot to those folks. And I had the opportunity to participate in a number of Veterans Day ceremonies, Veterans Day weekend ceremonies around, both at Castle Point and the Dutchess County Ceremony. Thank you.
I'd like to compliment the music teacher at Vassar Road. The kids from kindergarten, kindergarten kids were incredible. They were really, really, really good. They could sing. They were the best.
And Mr. Lumia knows because he's a singer. Mrs. Pelton? Mr. Slow Shower?
Thank you. Just wanted to hope everyone in the community have a fantastic Thanksgiving, and make sure you take advantage of your gym memberships. I had made some comments at the last board meeting on our vote with regards to moving to the two-tiered bus schedule. I had done a little bit more research, because we had, we're handed some information that night based on the student survey, so I just went back and really took a look at some of the information, because we had some discussion on responses. You know, the board did receive, based on my calculation, about twelve emails to the board with regards to the two-tier. Three of those emails were in favor, the other nine expressed their opinion they were not in favor. But what I had mentioned last time, what concerned me even more, was the responses of our high school students. We had done a survey, and again, there were some technical issues on the second set of survey questions that went out, and the ones that we were supplied with roughly were three-hundred-and-thirty-three responses. I did a little bit more homework on this, and moving forward, I would request from my fellow board members in the administration, if we're going to make some significant changes in the district that are affecting our students, and we ask our students for their opinion and their comments on things, that the mechanism that we put in place gives all of the students the opportunity. Between the two high schools, we're looking at roughly close to four thousand students, and we had three-hundred-and-thirty-three responses. Forty-five responses from RCK, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven responses from John Jay, and one from Orchard View. I truly believe that the opinions, the comments, the suggestions of our students are very important for us to take into consideration when we're making decisions on how to move this district forward. That is really what strategic planning is all about. It's based on what is best for our students and our community. I truly feel that their input, their comments, and their responses are very important, and we should not take those comments lightly, one way or the other. Of those three-hundred-and-thirty-three responses, it looked like to me, based on the information that was presented, there were two-hundred-and-thirty-nine comments or answers to questions with a written response. Of those two-hundred-and-thirty-nine responses, a hundred-and-forty-eight of the students responded in a negative fashion without moving to a two-tier system, which is roughly, I guess, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five percent of the students that responded were not in favor. I want to know what the rest of the students felt, you know, what their feelings were. I truly believe we needed to take that into consideration. We ended up with a response from a very small pool of students, and not knowing how many were the seniors, juniors, sophomores, or freshmen. It's not really going to affect the seniors, they're not going to be here. The low-class students, it is going to affect. And the survey that we had conducted did not really give us that type of information. So I don't want to be repetitive. I just want us, when we move forward and make these decisions, that we strongly take into consideration where our students, where their opinions are on these things, and we look at that information, we strongly take that into consideration when we make decisions based on recommendations from administration to move this district forward. It's about the kids, and I believe it's very important that they participate in the decision-making process to the degree of their comments, their responses, their feedback are taken into consideration. And I know we're going to continue to have this discussion moving forward as we make this change and this implementation, and hopefully the students will participate and give us their feedback. So if things are going well, we want to know that, and if things are not going well, we can address those issues and make the proper changes. Thank you.
Mrs. Karat? Yes, I attended the policy committee meeting as well, and we have a very hard, as Mr. Lumia stated, we have dedicated people on that committee. We were able to work through over thirty policies, and everyone came prepared and have, you know, have been, having been previously reading policies, so we were able to discuss. We're really making progress in that committee.
I had the pleasure of attending the veterans' commemorations at Castle Point, which Mr. Rubin was instrumental in inviting us to, and also at John Jay, wonderful ceremony, seven in the morning, and everyone was bright-eyed, bushy-tailed, and delighted.
The sun was up.
And the sun was even up, and honored veterans. And at Vassar Road, yes, the children were terrific. Not only did they all sing beautifully, but they read some of their letters, and it's amazing what kindergartners can write. Then I was, I went, Mr. Galetta and I went with Mr. Carrión to the Lower Hudson Superintendent's Board Members Dinner down at Carrington, and we heard a speaker on the politics of education, which is pretty much a management setting one's guest. Wasn't it? Then, after that, I attended the Legislative Action Committee chaired by Mr. Slow Shower, the Audit Committee, the Policy Committee that Mrs. Pelton has done so much work behind the scenes on, the Strategic Plan Committee today, and I think that's it, we had a lot of committees recently. I also had the opportunity to go to the Multicultural Conference at New Pauls, which was two Fridays ago. Very interesting presentations, and several people from the district, I saw, were also there, and I brought back the materials to share with you at the workshops that they did not do. Thank you. 6.01, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education, members of the community. First, I'd like to take this opportunity, and I speak for my senior assistant superintendent and myself, Dr. Bunk, and I just want to take this opportunity. Thank you. We weren't around two weeks ago, we both had personal losses in our lives, and just the support, this is one of these opportunities where you actually know that you work in a district, but sometimes the word district changes to family, so I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the WCSD family for all of the support and care that they showed Dr. Bunk and I in the last few weeks, so I wanted to take this opportunity first personally to share that. In addition to that, I'm always pleased to see my seniors, the seniors of our district here. I know you're obligated to come, get your signatures, but as I say, I'm a broken record, but I want you to understand this is your last year. Make it great. Make it great, make it fun, and be safe. Just be safe as you're having a great time and you're learning, and this is, this is an unforgettable time in your life, so we're very proud of you, and we can't wait for June, so you walk across stage, so that we can hand over your diploma. So thank you for being here.
7.01, New York State Report Card and Grades Three Through Eight Assessments.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the Board of Education. Dr. Carver and I will do a brief presentation on our New York State Report Card. This is sort of, this is sort, this is an amended version, if you will. Our 2015-16 School Report Card is available on nicet.gov. The data that we find there can sometimes be confusing as it refers to graduation rates from a year ago, this past June, whereas we'll give you updated information on that. We also have this sort of part two, the first part of this presentation with regards to Regents' Exams and assessment results on the Regents' Exams. It was already provided in the previous presentation by Dr. Carver. So, I'll give you a quick overview of our BENs reporting enrollment. BENs Day is the first Wednesday in October of every school year. BEN stands for Basic Educational Data System. This is the, these are the enrollment calculations that are used as determined by the state for anything, for state aid and other purposes, so we talk about enrollment with the district or what the state sees for enrollment, it always talks about BENs Day. So just so you can see in the trend, I'm just going to focus on the, on the top, the top corner, the top right corner, in the fourteen-fifteen school year, we had eleven-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-five students on BENs Day. Two thousand fifteen sixteen school years, we went October of two thousand fifteen, we had eleven thousand oh ninety-five, and for October of this year, which is October fifth, we had ten thousand nine hundred thirty-four students. So we've seen a overall, obviously, decline in our enrollments overall. Just by comparison of student demographic breakdown, there, there was a shift, there's been a shift, a steady shift in enrollments of students, white students have come down from eight, eight four hundred two years ago, eight thousand last year, to seventy-eight-hundred this year, and minority students population have come up, so becoming more diverse, which is wonderful, and that is reflected in our enrollment information. Again, our BENs Day enrollment is ten thousand nine thirty-four, that is an adjustment of one hundred and sixty-one students from the previous school year, and here is the demographic breakdown changes by ethnicity group. Other groups reported in our state report card is, you know, we look at students who are, used to be called Limited English Proficient, now we call them English Language Learners. Worth noting that there was ninety-three students two years ago, our students with disability count seventeen hundred two years ago, and maybe twenty-nine hundred students were reduced to lunch. That our English Language Learners numbers went up steadily compared to last year, our students with disabilities declined significantly, and our economically disadvantaged students seem to take a dip, not if this is a reporting error or not, from fifteen sixteen to this year, we're going to see it pop back up from sixteen seventeen. English Language Learners now one hundred and thirty-nine students, up from ninety-three two years ago, students with disabilities study of fifteen oh eight, and economically disadvantaged students back around twenty-seven percent.
So the next few slides are going to focus on the three through eight New York State ELA exam. We are comparing the district data, which is the blue bar, to the statewide data, which is the yellow bar. We have forty-nine percent of grade three indicated by, in the purple box, that district and the state is up forty-two percent. We are not comparing last year's scores to this year's scores because they changed the exam. The scores are not directly comparable, and that is also listed in the shaded box at the top. So you will see that we are, the district is either slightly above or equal to the state for grades three and four on the ELA. For grades five and six, similar, with thirty-eight percent and thirty-five percent respectively. Seven and eight, we are also slightly better or equal to how the state is performing. And for math, these slides indicate forty-three percent and forty-eight percent respectively for grades three and four. For grades five and six, forty-eight percent and fifty-one percent for grade six. And similar statistics, grade seven is at thirty-five percent achieving three or four, and sixty-one percent grade eight math achieving three or four on the New York State Math Exam.
What's not listed on the state, on nicet.gov, is our test refusal rates, which I know is pretty interesting. So we've included that breakdown in these next few slides for ELA. The way this works is the overall number of test refusals, the total percentage district-wide test refusal for grade three ELA, and the breakdown of refused versus tested in all of our charts I'm following. So real quickly, thirty, twenty-seven percent for grade three, thirty-three percent test refusal for grade four, grade six ELA, grade five, forty-two percent, grade six ELA. Grade seven, it starts to go up, grade seven and eight, we have fifty-three percent test refusal at junior high level for grade seven, and sixty-three percent for grade eight in ELA. Math tells a similar story, something a little higher, thirty-one percent grade three, thirty-seven percent grade four, forty-one percent grade five, forty-six percent grade six, fifty-nine percent grade seven, and sixty-one percent test refusal, grade eight math. Difference, the only difference in the assessments is an extra assessment, a number of students, one hundred and sixty-four students in the district of grade eight took the algebra Regents' Exam. There is a, there is a positive, positive news on our graduation rates. These, and just, these cohort years are confusing perhaps, but they, we speak in cohort years. And if we were to look at the data that nicet.gov School Report Card, what could be confusing is, is in the two thousand fifteen sixteen School Report Card, it reports graduation rates that are reflective of June of two thousand and fifteen. When they talk about the school's report card, the graduation rate, the most recent graduation rate is always a year behind on the state's report card. And it's basically tied to accountability, but it's always been reported that way. What's different this year is the report cards actually have a lot of different. So when we talk about the two thousand twelve thirteen cohort, we're talking about the students who entered ninth grade for the first time in two thousand twelve thirteen school year. So I always look at the first number, the number on the left, two thousand twelve plus four years, these are kids who graduated in two thousand sixteen. This includes the August graduates of two thousand sixteen. So they, and they'll be, so we're looking at, John Jay had a graduation rate of ninety-four point two percent, RCK had a graduation rate of eighty-nine point three percent, Orchard View a graduation rate of thirty-nine point three percent. Again, it's a four-year graduation rate for these cohort years, and that's, and you notice it's a substantial increase. John Jay went up by nearly two percent, RCK went up by nearly six percent, and Orchard View, which is always tough, they can have big dips up and down depending on their cohort size, went up by nearly seven percent. The five-year graduation rate goes back to, you have to look at the previous year's cohort. So obviously, you know, in June of two thousand sixteen or August of two thousand sixteen, what, what students, if you look at to see how long it took them, how many kids, how many students graduated after five years, you have to go back to the two thousand eleven twelve cohort, which means that they would have graduated four years at two thousand and fifteen. But given that extra year, the graduation rate is, John Jay, ninety-four point three for that cohort for five years, eighty-eight point three for RCK, and thirty-five point nine. So there's a significant jump in Orchard View with that extra year, which coincides with the, the understanding that not all students enter Orchard View with, you know, on their, on the right schedule of credits towards graduation. So again, here's a, here's just a line graph representation of the last five years. We see a really nice spike of the most, most recent graduation rate of ninety percent overall for the district, which is fantastic.
For quite some time now, we have been discussing New York State revisions of the Common Core Learning Standards. So much of the information that's available online, I'm not bringing this slide to you, but it's here for you to refer to if you would like to, is that when the State Education Department of Education Committee to review the changes, they indicated that sixty percent of the ELA standards were recommended to get changed, and fifty-five percent of the math standards were recommended that some changes occur. So the Wapington Central School District was very involved in providing feedback to the state via their online survey. So many of our administrators and teachers had the opportunity to work with DC Voces during their group work sessions, and they worked with other teachers and administrators across the county and provided countywide feedback. But we also worked with our administrators during our joint admin sessions. We worked as a team, we divided up the standards, and we discussed and reviewed and provided feedback on many of the grade levels. We also encouraged our TCs, our administrators, our directors, to encourage the conversation during department meetings and faculty meetings, and also for our teachers to provide feedback. I also had some questions regarding, when the state talked about sixty percent and fifty-five percent changes, were the changes significant? So I just gave you a couple of examples. So there are thirty standards for kindergarten reading, and this is just a kindergarten sample. So ten of them had no changes. Eleven of the standards have changed combined, reading for information, reading for literature. So it's the same language, they just, instead of being in two different places, they're now in one. One standard, text complexity, was completely moved. One standard was removed from its current location. Four standards changed the language to ensure clarity, and two were changed for developmental concern. So based upon that information, whether it's significant or not, that's of course up to interpretation. to interpretation, but I did want to outline exactly of those thirty standards, what those specific changes were. In the writing standards, there were twelve. There were previously eight. In the revisions, there are twelve. All of them indicated that there were some changes, but most of the changes occurred because their order in the document were changed, and very little of the language was changed at all. And there were four new additions to ensure clarity. And I wanted to give you an example. So for example, for writing number six, for KW six, the current standard said with guidance and support from adults, you can read it, the new revised one is KW four. So the number changed, but you will see a lot of the language is the same. They just changed some of the order of the words, where the beginning, for the current standard, started with guidance and support, revised standard ended with guidance and So also with seventh grade, I gave it early grade, I wanted to give a seventh grade in the math standards, forty-three standards or indicators, twenty-five had no changes, fifteen, the change included clarification and adding clarifying words. Three standards, they changed the wording, and two standards, they would change for developmental concerns.
Since we reached the fifteen, then it's just on the presentation, and there's, was no time for questions or comments. We, if anyone on the board wishes to speak, please make a motion to extend discussion. Mr. Lumia, for how long?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Okay, second, all those in favor? Unanimous? Okay. All, all, okay, one, two, three.
Uh-oh.
Did you hear what I said, Mr. Galetta?
Yeah, maybe a ten minutes.
Yes, I, yes, I just wanted to appeal, Mr. Galetta, that was standing there, yes. So those in favor, Mr. Galetta, Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Goodman, Mrs. Pelton, Mr. Slowshower, Mrs. Karat, and Mrs. Kellin opposed, Mr. Ruben. Okay, Mr. Lumia, you have a question?
First, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Dr. Watkins for clarifying about the standards. From what I gathered, there's a real significant difference between what was and what is. So I'd like to hear that. Secondly, I do have a question regarding the, the results, mathematics. I think it's, I'm not sure it's clear what it was.
I'll say seven, that's my question.
Yeah, from grade six to grade seven.
Maybe you're having too much fun.
Okay, the district in, in sixth grade, there were fifty-one percent versus seventh grade, thirty-five percent. Why is it a drop? Is it because of the number of people that take the exam, or is there any reason why? I'm asking Dr. Watkins. I'm sorry. Dr. Carwell, I'm sorry, Dr. Carwell, Jesus Christ, excuse me. Anyway, Dr. Carwell, my apologies, you know, if you've ever seen a woman once in a while, act out all the time, not just once in a while. What has made a difference in sixth grade versus seventh grade results? Is it because of the people not taking the exam? What, what was such a big disparity from, thirty-five, I think it was forty, the fifty-one percent to thirty-five percent? That's a significant drop. Now, what, what caused that drop? Was it the, the, the choice too hard, or was it the fact that a lot of kids did not take? They refused to take, to take the test. Some of those kids perhaps would refuse to wear headsets on students.
Yes, well, we know.
Which would have made a big difference.
Yes, but that is, that is true. So when we look at the number of students that took the exam, so there were four hundred and forty-four students in grade six that took the exam, and then in grade seven, we have three hundred and sixty-five students. Now remember, these are not the same students that are being tested from sixth grade to seventh grade. These are sixth graders, which are a much more particular set of students, and then seventh grade is another set of students, so we can't compare the students to students. However, what we can do is look at the students at each of the grades and determine based upon some of their formative assessments within their classrooms, how they are making adequate progress. And not using this data assessment as a sole measure, but as one data set in a multitude of data sets that we have available for us to look at.
Would we be doing anything to educate parents why they should not refuse to take the test, even though they have the right to refuse it? Would we make any master to educate why, why not take the test?
Let me be the safe one to answer that question. The, this would call for another agenda item conversation. I think I have shared with the senior staff and with the administrators that the most important thing is for us to continue to work on what is our local curriculum, our local assessments, but we have chosen to monitor growth and really provide and expend our energy there, and ensure that the things that we are utilizing globally are aligned to the standards, the way we interpret the standards, and that, and that we, if, that students taking the test, that we can find those correlations and see that there are some correlations. But to actually go out there and, and, and tell people this is what they should do, I think that our energy is much better focused on the fact that we're truly working hard with the local assessments that we have brought into the district, our curriculum that we have, our professional developers we saw today as strategic planning. And that is where the energy has to, at this point, continue to go into that effort. With that said, though, there will be a superintendent's forum that's going to address the standards, talk about the standards, and have the parents come in and ask the questions that they want to ask regarding standards, regarding state assessments, and we would provide those answers, and we'll have a good productive dialogue with the parents, so that parents can go and make their, their informed decision for their children. What I also like to share is that when you see the test refusal rate, what we don't take into account, and it's, and it's, it's, it happens more at the middle school level, of course, they're adolescents, we all remember what it's like to be a teenager. Some of the students come in, and we know this for a fact, some of the students come in, take day one, get home, start in, Mom, Dad, Billy, Joe, John, Rob. They didn't take the test, I'm not coming in tomorrow, and I'm not going to continue the test. So then what we have, they, it doesn't count that no longer as a test refusal. We have students that do not take day two and day three, and then we also have students who may take day two and day three, but at that point, now that they saw sixty percent of their classmates not taking the test, are not providing the efforts necessary. So that's a reality, and all of these things really just create much more, it's hard to determine the, 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 the true outcome. But what we do is, and I was saying before, is really looking to the curriculum that we're providing our students, our, our local benchmark assessments, whether it's I Ready and/or F and P, and with that, really taking the skill set that's listed on the test, and making sure that we see and create those alignments. Because at the end of the day, students are going to have to infer. Students are going to learn how, learn how to draw conclusions, learn how to have an inquiry-based style of learning. So all of these things that are skill sets, that are part of the standards and the test, are important that we interpret that within our local curriculum.
Okay, I think we need to extend time. Presently, we have a motion to extend for another, what, five, ten minutes? Mr. Slowshower?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Mrs. Goodman, you're second?
I'll second, but I know that I have questions.
I have questions too, so would you want to make them for ten?
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes, do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Lumia, all those in favor? Mrs. Pelton, Mr. Slowshower, Mrs. Karat, Mr. Galetta, Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Goodman, and Mrs. Kellin opposed, Mr. Ruben. I just wanted to say something just to follow quickly with what Mr. Lumia asked about six to seven. I do notice that in the sixth grade math, the district fifty-one percent were proficient compared to only forty percent in the state, and in the eighth grade, sixty-one percent of this district were proficient as opposed to only forty-four percent in the state. But there on the seventh grade exam of the district and the state were about the same and were much lower. District thirty-five percent, state thirty-six percent. Mrs. Carwell, did, was, did the teachers report that that was especially a difficult exam this year, the seventh grade?
We have not conducted that analysis to determine if the exams, if the seventh grade exam was more difficult than the other grades.
If I could just say so quickly, tomorrow's our joint admin academy. We have, that's our professional development for administrators, we do that once a month in two sessions. So tomorrow's three grades, three to eight, and we're going to be looking at the data there and looking at those skill sets. So this conversation will be on.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodman?
One quick question. Sorry. Okay, very quickly, Superintendent Carrion, is there data for the local assessments and equivalents, so that we can get a sense, when using local assessments, how many, what percentage of kids are at grade level or above?
Well, this is.
Or proficient, or three, I mean, that somehow equivalent to state measurement?
I've, I've always been a front about educational law and APPR. This is where we utilize it two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year, as you saw in the weekly memo, to really look at what are we going to utilize for benchmark assessments. As a teacher, you know, when Education Law thirty-twelve C came in, and the local assessments that were created or brought in for many school districts did not really provide us with a more diagnostic interpretation of how our students are doing. So I would consider this now, and that's why I was answering Mr. Lumia's question in the way that I did, that this is our first year where we will be really looking at real, our, the data that we reached back, that we've brought in, that we're going to look at, and that's going to help us to drive instruction with what we're doing. So right now, we do have our first set of data, which is with I Ready, and the great thing is that the conversations that have already been taking place with teachers is that they're really seeing and finding the correlations in terms of the skill sets where students are excelling, and where students, where, where they're not finding surprises, as we know, but really looking at it and providing that to inform instruction.
That shows the validity of the assessments themselves, which is a good thing. My actual real question, was the high school graduation rate, it jumped quite a bit from the, from the two thousand eleven, twelve cohort to the two thousand twelve, thirteen cohort, like six or seven percent? Why did that happen?
There's, there's, there's a couple, there's a couple of reasons that service to care, I'd like to add to it. The first, the first one really is just superintendent, really just put a, put a system in place where he's like, we're going to look at, we're going to look at every student, we're going to look at every student in the cohort, we're going to track students, we're going to track them early, we're going to give them interventions early, and we're going to make sure that, that these kids get the focus that they need to make sure they get. It's really just about a matter of creating a different data system to, to have everyone look at those kids as a team, and make sure that any, any effort to, to have them make up credits or make up region's exam, that they have missed, receive that extra paid attention.
Thank you. Mr. Slowshower?
Thank you. And I, I do believe what you just explained is part of the purpose of strategic planning for tracking kids, is to identify early on and then build on that. So if we continue in that fashion, we should continue to increase, because that's the whole point of what, before, the strategic plan, the original premise behind it was getting the students early enough to identify and then follow. I just had a couple of quick questions. One, Mr. Carrion, what you explained with regards to the refusals is very interesting and pertinent information. Would it be possible to put something together for the board to get a better understanding of how many students actually came in on day one and took the test, and then decided not to take the test for day two or day three? I think that's a significant piece of information. I definitely would like to get a clear understanding.
You know, I'm saying to myself, I don't really want to tell them that, because I don't want them to just go and say, can I get that data?
Well, I think, I think that's important.
I think Dr. Shukat sitting here, I think it would also have to be where we actually would have to probably go test by test at that point, but we can, we can attempt that.
I mean, I would assume they came in with a letter from their parent, not just.
Well, it doesn't, at that point, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. If there's a, if there's a way, I just think that would be really important information for the board to have. I just want to get back to my original question, oh, Mr. Lumia stole my thunder a little bit. And I know that, Dr. Paul, you mentioned that the tests were not the same the last couple of years, there were changes, but memories, my memory serves me correct, we seem to have had a problem the last two years with the sixth and seventh grade with not achieving higher, higher, either equal to or below the state average. And I don't know if it's that's the cohort, and even though the tests changed from sixth grade last year to seventh grade, but it seems to be that that cohort is having some difficulty with the mass, with the math portion of the, of the state assessments. And I know you said that the tests are different, but even though the tests were different, the students seem to be having a struggle with that material. Is there a way that we've been able to identify, we've talked to the math teachers, have they been able to identify that, and is there a way to somehow correct that? Because it seems like that cohort every year is barely with the state average or is, is below the state average.
Yes, so two years ago, we went with a K through six math program, math and focus. So we now have materials that are consistent district-wide for all of our students K through six. We are looking at the seventh and eighth grade curriculum for math. It definitely needs some revision, and the teachers and the TCS are looking at what changes we can make, and when we can sit as a team and start making those changes and updates into the system. We are also looking at various different textbooks, so we can have revised textbooks in grade seven and eight because they are currently using older models. We're looking at something that will complement our curriculum that the teachers can use consistently. And so, once that is done, we will have consistent math materials from kindergarten up to elementary.
Thank you.
Mr. Lumia?
Just one last thing. It's very difficult looking at this data. It makes sense of this data when you have so many people opting out. I don't know if you can compare, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to compare. When you have sixty percent of the kids opting out, these could be good, good students opting out. And what Mrs. Slashower says, can you find out from day one to day two, or that Mr. Carrion just stated, John didn't take the test, I don't want to get either, so I can be lots of reasons. So to do that, to do that particular, to read the research, I think it's to me, that does have much.
The critical piece, and it just goes back to the way I answered your first question, is that the important piece is what we're bringing in, what our teachers are selecting, what our, what our teachers in our different committees have selected to bring in, and the administration, along with the teachers, working to look at our local curriculum. And then based on what it is that we're doing, what are the skill sets that support the standards, and then looking at the skill set on the task, as opposed to really looking at the questions or the story, but what are the skill sets that are, that are, that are aligned to every. everything that it is that we're doing? So that way, we can take those, extract that from the task, the skill set, and then utilize it as the information to match up with what we do in the classroom.
Just one last thing. I'm glad that there's consistency in textbook, did you use? I think this is extremely important.
I still have two questions, so could I have? We have five minutes, I'm taking five. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Goodman, motion for five, someone else second? Mrs. Pelton, all in favor? Mrs. Karat? Are you both?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay, unanimous. Okay, just to follow up on the cohort matter that Mr. Slowshower mentioned, is it possible, is it possible that the problem that cohort is having is the point at which they, we switch to a different curriculum and then perhaps there were gaps in, from the one curriculum to the other at that grade level?
That is definitely a possibility, and we've been having those conversations between the sixth grade teachers and the seventh grade teachers. We have provided opportunities for that vertical conversation to occur and will continue to do so. So it is important for us to be able to use all of our resources to be able to make that determination, but we have started those conversations.
Is there any possibility, I realize the textbook companies try to force you to buy all, as many grades as possible at once and switch at once, to in the future when we have to switch from one textbook to another that's significantly different in curriculum, that we could phase in some of it grade by grade so that it's not, that we don't run into these problems?
We could definitely select which grades we want to order the textbook from here and have bound.
Because they want to give you a better deal if you promise to buy a ton of them. Okay, thank you. And the other thing, I just want a little clarification, Mr. Carrion. When you said that the students in Sis, junior high mostly, who decide to take one day of the test, the other two, is that either do, does count as opt-outs or do they just count that they flunked the test?
They don't count that's test refusal.
So they count as a low score?
Right. So they count, so right. So what we'll get, and I'm glad that Dr. Shuket's here, because he experiences it firsthand along with Mr. Thompson, either Mr. LoKima or Dr. Cogwell, at one time Dr. Bonk, would get the call, listen, I got another seven kids that came in today, they took the test, and now they're, they're not, they're not going to continue with the task. And so it does, it does create, it creates for a failing grade, if you want to call it, let's not say failing, it creates for a score of a level one or a level two for the student, but the, that, that, yeah, that answers your question.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Mrs. Pelton?
If you're better putting the answer on email, that's fine, or on the page. My concern is first, I have tremendous respect for what you do, and I realize that you haven't been in this department for a complete length, and I appreciate that the conversations are being had. My concern is that the sixth, seventh, and eighth has been an ongoing issue year after year, and while conversations are being had, we still have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. And if we can, if we have identified what parts of the curriculum are missing or not matching up with what is on the test, what are we doing for our current students?
I think there's another component to look at, Mrs. Pelton, which is to look at our students in the ninth grade. So our students who go into the ninth grade at the passing rate for the Algebra Common Core, I, I, what I, I'm, what, one of the things that I'm assuming, I'm using that word, one of the things that I am assuming at the middle school level is that because we don't have a formalized textbook, we haven't created a, until this year, a benchmark with true diagnostic results. But what we can look at is how those seventh and eighth graders in the last few years are obligated to take the Common Core Algebra test as ninth graders. And what we see is we have a successful passive grade. So there is that drop, but there are a lot of things that come into play. If we were to see those eighth graders and also then look at the scores in that level of seeing that 35%, that 36%, then we can say, wow, there is something happening instructionally that's not been successful. But there's no way that you can have to quote unquote run in academic gears and then get to the ninth grade and successfully pass the Common Core ninth grade Algebra assessment. So we can look at that data and provide it to the board as well to see that data, and we saw some of that last meeting.
In addition, teachers are doing more than just talking about the work. The seventh and eighth grade teachers, they do meet in grade level teams, they do meet in department meetings, and they do discuss the curriculum and they revision, revisions to the curriculum on an ongoing basis. What I was referring to is a more formal updating the curriculum during summer curriculum writing work, which is something that will take place over the summer. But they do work and they make revisions to the curriculum to meet the needs of the students based upon their formative and summative data assessment they have in their class.
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So they, they're making modifications based on the classroom during the school year, and just because a formal change is not being made doesn't mean that they're not adding to or making changes currently, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, kind of. Consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Steve Mann?
Resolute Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated. Eight point zero two, eight point zero three, eight point zero four, eight point zero five, eight point zero six, eight point zero seven, eight point zero eight, eight point zero nine, eight point one zero, eight point one one, eight point one two, eight point one three, eight point one four, eight point one five, eight point one six, eight point one seven, and eight point one eight.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Galetta, second? Mrs. Pelton, discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Nine point zero one, discussion and approval of letter to legislators, local assistance plan designation for Wapentures Junior High School.
Nine point zero one, Resolute Board of Education of the Wapentures Central School District does hereby approve the attached letter addressed to the legislators concerning the local assistance plan designation for Wapentures Junior High School as preempted by the Legislative Action Committee.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Rubin, second? Mr. Lumia, all those, discussion? Mrs. Goodman?
I want to explain to the board what part of these, what seems to have happened to the original draft of the letter that the committee submitted. And that was that it seemed not to include a very key piece of information that came from the superintendent, which was that the science standards and assessment that were involved in the specific designation of white students not making adequate annual yearly progress had nothing to do with the ELA and math standards of the Common Core. The science standards were old, the assessment was old, and that was, I was not at the Legislative Action Committee where they discussed revising the letter. But I think that that information was hugely important because if we send out the Legislative Action Committee letter as it was originally written, I think we would just look foolish. We would wind up complaining about something that's not even relevant. So I wanted the board to be aware, I know that when Amanda, the member of the Legislative Action Committee wrote a draft, and when I sat down with her to again, like kind of rework the draft, I made an error. I thought that it did include the Common Core assessments. So the, there is a version that does take that information into account and talks about science and science only. So I just wanted the board to be aware that the letter is originally designated was seriously inaccurate.
Mrs. Goodman, would that be revision three as in your packet?
Revision three was the one that I did after learning it, that information. I omitted all the references to the Common Core and the flawed standards because it's not relevant. I kept as much of the original letter as I could in terms of narrating what happened with this particular cohort. But I tried, but I tried to keep the letter as factual and as focused on the science outcome as possible. And essentially, what happened is, again, we are talking about opt-outs. For whatever reason, kids decided not to take the test, and that affected the way the district was rated, the way the Wapentures Junior High School was rated. And I think that Mr. Galetta said something at our first discussion of this meeting, of this issue, that I want to echo and agree with. The first is that even as a member of the Legislative Action Committee, I think because of this serious error in the letter, because it did include Mr. Carrion's, all of Mr. Carrion's input, that the credibility of the committee is at this point to me seriously damaged. And I particularly regret that because I don't like my own credibility being damaged this way. The second thing that I want to echo that Mr. Galetta said is that parents obviously make the decision to they make, and certainly we have no right to second guess them. But because people, because they don't change their decision, doesn't mean the decision doesn't have consequences. It has consequences for the kids opting out because now parents really don't know where their kids stand in a larger population, not just in the Wapentures School District, but of the state. And the second piece, that it has consequences for all the other kids in the district as well, because we do not have adequate data to tell us where our students are. So with that being said, what I felt that we really need to do, what we really need to ask the legislature is to lean on the State Education Department to not penalize a district with high opt-out rates.
Mrs. Pelton?
Sorry. I just, I had also submitted a revision, and my concern, I mean, I shared what was ever discussed, but even outside of that, when the appeals were written, I felt that that was the time when you're personal, when you explain your personal circumstance. And I felt that involving this school personally when you're going to legislation, it's not really what we're asking for. And what, we had two appeals, and what we're saying is there is a flaw in the system in how LAP schools are assigned. And when I was reading it and pulling out, what are we really complaining about and what are we trying to accomplish? When I combed through the letters, I felt that at the heart of it was how this is being designated is not fair, and it's also not fair, who gets funding and who doesn't. And so when I read through that letter and took all of that, I felt like that's really what we wanted to see change. And I feel often if you personalize or put too much information into it, what you want to get done doesn't get done. And really what we wanted to see from my perspective was a change in how this is being designated and some fairness in the funding. And that's what they're able to do, and they're not able to do the other things that they were being asked to do. So that's the approach.
Mr. Rubin?
Mr. Duggan, I can wholeheartedly concur with what you're saying, that we're more likely to see overall changes if we go with a larger group than just us here. And perhaps at some point, maybe this board can thought as to whether or not we want to pursue this both at the local level, which would be in my, I believe, through the Duchess County School Boards Association, and then perhaps if we're looking at something greater, it would be the New York State School Boards Association when they have their annual meeting of the voting to try, to try and influence legislators on their way of thinking, their way of voting.
Mr. Galetta?
I just want to say that I'm very glad, and I think it's very important that we're having this discussion and basically raising awareness of the accountability system, the opt-outs. You know, people, like Ms. Goodman said, and I mentioned last week, people can opt out for whatever reason they want, but just an awareness of how that impacts our school district, how that impacts, how our schools are rated and designated in the accountability system. Parents can make the choice that they want, right? No, we're not, we can't force parents to do, take the test, won't take the test, whatever it is. But just raising that awareness of the accountability system, you know, the efforts to change the standards, the efforts to change the test, the current efforts that are changing the accountability system that the state is making, and moving forward, it's my feeling that, you know, participating in the accountability system is going to remain a requirement, whatever that accountability system remains to be, if it's, if it's the test, the current test, if they get changed, whatever it is. But just the impact of how we as, as parents, as students, as the district, respond to that accountability system and how we partake in it, and whether, you know, whether we're willing to accept the consequences of not participating in that, in that system. Because there are consequences, which is exactly what this, this letter is all about, right? We are, Wapentures Junior High was designated as a LAP school based on the amount of students that opted out in the test, and now it has a significant impact on our, on our junior high school. So just, I'm just very glad that at very basic level, we are raising awareness of this issue so that parents have a better understanding of what's going on. And I, as was discussed earlier, I'm glad you're about the form, and I, and I think it's great that we're going to continue to raise awareness so at least people can make a more informed decision with that.
Mrs. Karat?
I was wondering if the board would want to start to focus on revision two as a result of what Mr. Galetta is saying. I wrote revision one, and most of the points that, which was, which was just based from the original letter, and most of the points I'm satisfied have been met in revision two. The only thing that I would pose as a question to the board would be, do we want to get a bit more specific as to what we might want the legislators to consider in terms of amending to, to either have a waiver from LAP designation, to take into account a certain percentage of opting out, and put that, keep that in mind before- of opting out, and put that, keep that in mind before they make a LAP designation to look at those statistics? I don't know. Mrs. Pelton's revision is great. I would want to see maybe giving the legislators a little more direction as to what we would like to have.
I'd like to make a point of order right here, Jim. That Mrs. Carron, if you're looking to have us approve either the first or second revision, that a motion would have to be made to amend, I believe, correctly, if I'm wrong, Mrs. Peddler. We need a motion to amend our original resolution here, to send out either one of these two revisions rather than the original letter.
Or revision three, if that's what Mrs. Goodman did.
Or revision.
So I hope everybody has had an opportunity to read the three revisions, and to, if we want to adopt one of those three revisions, or we can do it. Still, the resolution was on the original committee letter, so, which had been tabled from the previous meeting, that's why it was old business. So if we do have something we'd like to switch to a different revision, one of the three, please make a motion to amend the letter to be the revision. Yes, Mrs. Goodman.
First of all, Trustee Pelton is absolutely correct that we need to address the funding issue, which version three does not. And certainly, some sentence needs, or two, needs to be inserted there reflecting the funding issue, which was also in Mr. Carrion's input. Sorry, super-pendant, that's two. The other piece, though, is the purpose, what the purpose of the letter is. When I first proposed the resolution, that we asked the Legislative Action Committee to prepare a letter, my basic thinking was to ask our legislators, the two state legislators, the state's assemblyman and then the state senator, that represent the Wapatchers School District, to lobby New York State Education Department. Not a legislative direction, not a broad, general thing, but a very specific request for them to do that. The secondary piece was how, was that our experience of our junior high school does indeed illustrate how foolish the system can be because of the opt-out issue. So if you want to change their purpose from what I thought it should be, that's a matter for the board to decide and can reflect, be reflected in the version of the letter that they choose. But I'm simply saying that my intent was for a very specific action otherwise. But frankly, my own personal opinion is there's no point in doing it unless we get some kind of relief, whether it be more money or a total waiver of the LAP designation, then I'm not sure I understand what the purpose of the letter would be.
Mr. Carrion.
So going along with those lines, and I understand my role, I'm the super-pendant, and when I originally saw this letter, I just wanted to say that I'm a team player, and there were words that I found to be quite offensive, and it's not the climate or culture that I think we wanted to portray as a district. However, you're talking to legislators, you're talking to politicians, and I guess what I'm trying to get at is that what's going to happen is not going to happen now. So you're writing a letter about things you don't believe in in terms of education. I think it was a few meetings ago where Madam President indicated that she's been to Albany and lobbied, I've been to Albany and lobbied. I think when, as part of the committee, is to understand that you're writing a letter about things that need to stop. But nobody's, I say this respectfully, there's not a politician that's going to go to Albany, knock on the door, say, "You don't know what's happening at Wapatchers Junior High School." Get them off that list. That's not, the point here is, what is it that we don't believe in? And as an example, Wapatchers Junior High School happens to be one of these schools where they've been designated and being slapped in the wrist gave us the opportunity to say, "Hey, we can give you some money to fix this situation." We do the entire thing, and then they don't give us the money. But overall, what are we looking for in terms of change that needs to happen? And then taking into consideration that this is the last year for No Child Left Behind, and that the implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act is coming into play, which is the work that we did at BOSI's with our high school students about a month ago. So I think really looking at that, when you're talking to a politician, you want to sound as if you're talking to a politician. This, to me, is, a lot of the information is what I would be talking to Commissioner Elliott about, and having that kind of conversation about things that are very administrative in scope with some of the information that was provided in the letter. But the purpose is, the district wants change, we want to see change.
Would it be more effective, then, if we send this letter to Commissioner Elliott and to the Board of Regents?
I would just make a motion, point of order again, that right now we have a resolution on the table to either approve the resolution, if there's a, if there's looking to amend it, to consider either one of these three revisions, or perhaps an amendment to request this be tabled until the next meeting to have the administration look at this. That is certainly something that seems to have a lot of questions here. But right now, there's a resolution on the table with no amendment, requested amendment to either table it or to adapt one of the other three revisions.
Mrs. Carron.
I'd like to amend our, to make a motion to amend and to offer revision two to the board for a decision. We can decide who we're going to send it to, but if the tenor of the letter is more in keeping with what we're all agreed would be appropriate, I'd like to move that we consider revision two with a possible addition of the last paragraph of revision three. And if we want more time to approve it, we can.
Do we have a second?
Table to the next meeting.
Do we? Mr. Lue, or Mrs. Pelton?
I do agree with that.
Second, okay. All right. All right. On discussion on revision two with the addition of the final paragraph in revision three.
Yes.
Perhaps we should read revision two and.
I would like to have the letter read. I think it would be important that revision two get read.
Okay. All right. Would you like to read it first, Mrs. Carron? And then maybe Mrs. Goodman could read the final paragraph. Go ahead.
Yes. Well, Tracy.
All right, I'll go to Mrs. Pelton's. How much was Mrs. Pelton's and how much was Mrs. Carron's? I know you've got the same revisions.
The Board of Education of the Wapatchers Central School District is writing to advocate for change in the current criteria used to designate LAP schools and equity in funding this mandate. We believe the current criteria has unintended consequences negatively impacting students in need, as evidenced in this letter. Wapatchers Junior High School has been designated a LAP school based on criteria noted in Exhibit A. The subgroup of white students noted in the exhibit had a significant test refusal rate for the 2014-2015 school year. In the 2014-2015 school year, 119 out of the 264 white eighth-grade students refused the eighth-grade state science assessment. As a result, okay, we need to delete that end of that sentence. I'm not going to read it, but we, and did not take, that whole phrase will be deleted because it's not accurate. But going on, as a result, the assessment data regarding white students for the 2014-2015 school year is based on just over half of white students in that cohort. Nearly all students participated in the assessment for the 2013-2014 school year. Based on the current criteria, this results in the appearance of not enough white students performing at state level and subject to make yearly progress. An appeal of the LAP school designation was filed and denied. Applying the law literally and inconsistent funding is negatively impacting students in need by taking away their resources and utilizing them in subgroups where they are not needed. The Wapatchers Central School District was denied financial assistance for this mandate, whereas other school districts, and we could provide an example here if we would like, with the same identification did receive financial support. We believe the test refusal rate is the sole reason for the LAP designation and are confident the desired outcome was not to deprive students in need of their resources. Please look at the mandate in place and how test refusals contain the outcome. Furthermore, please investigate the equity and financial assistance for such mandates so we can ensure academic success for all students. Now, I would suggest, in my motion, I'd suggest we take those last two sentences and also incorporate what Mrs. Goodman had.
Well, good.
Yes. Mr. Rubin.
Mrs. Carron.
Oh, you want me to read that? Okay.
Did you also?
So the final paragraph of revision three goes on to say, and is a little bit stronger, "We ask your help in obtaining a waiver of the LAP designation in our district from NICE. Further, we ask that you bring this problem of LAP designations based on inadequate or skewed data to the attention of the rest of the legislature in order to address this illogical and unfunded mandate. Please help us so we can focus on educating all of our students in our schools."
Mrs. Pelton.
Yes, please. I think that that addresses everything. My only concern would be, I personally would prefer, in the last one, in order to address this unfunded mandate, because from my perspective, there was a logic that they applied, and just because that logic doesn't align with, it didn't take all things into consideration, I'm not comfortable with that. But if the rest of the board is, I'm 100%.
I would have preferred, like, this.
Yeah, I do, too. It's okay.
Read it, please.
The next-to-last sentence, I'm just going to read the last half of it, where it talks about inadequate or skewed data to the attention of the rest of the legislature in order to address, what I'm asking for is the removal of this illogical, and just saying, the legislator in order to address an unfunded mandate. Yes.
I would agree.
Okay. Are you all right with that, Mrs. Goodman?
That actually came from previous input from other members of the committee and Mr. Carrion, so I'm sure, I think that.
Carrion, are you?
I just had two pennies that I blew in here. Just, I was like, let me just have a seat now.
So are we done? Are we done? Would you like to keep?
Where? No, it's.
Illogical and unfunded.
Just a lot of change to unfunded.
They're just taking the word.
Illogical. Address this unfunded mandate.
Well, I mean, there's no logic involved.
Thank you, that was my point.
I mean, it's.
If you'd like to leave, we could leave illogical. I'm okay either way, personally.
Are we okay with the exhibits, attaching the exhibits, Bill?
Well, we're just discussing, then we'll make motion to amend. She made a motion to amend it as such, so is there anyone else saying anything else, or shall we vote on that, on the amendment? Okay. All those of taking out and illogical, illogical and, how many people are in favor of taking that out? Okay? Unanimous. Okay, I'd like to make an amendment up at the top. When you first say LAP schools, I think it should read Local Assistance Plan, and in parentheses, LAP, so that it's clear what we're talking about, since the legislators are not necessarily familiar with every acronym of the state government.
Just make a motion.
Yes, I'm making a motion.
This is going to be talking about number two, revision seven.
Yes, in the second line, to designate Local Assistance Plan schools, and then put LAP in parentheses since.
I'll second.
Okay? All right, all those in favor? All right, that is also unanimous. Okay.
Every class, we're just, LAP, updated there.
Yes. Yes, so that they know.
But LAP's in parentheses, right?
So that they will know in future what they want to add.
Last paragraph.
Yeah. Are there any other suggestions, amendments? Mrs. Goodman.
From revision three, I'm going to revise the sen, I'm going to revise the sentence the way it's written in revision three, changing WCSD to a school district. Acting, asking a school district to create an LAP on the basis of parents' decisions is punishing any district, punishing the district for factors beyond its control. I'm sorry, it's, I'm requesting that we add the last sentence, I'm sorry, the next-to-last sentence and the last sentence of the fourth paragraph of revision three. We cannot force parents to do something they believe is not in the best interest of their children. Asking a district to create an LAP on the basis of parents' district, decisions, is punishing the district for factors beyond its control and distracts from the crucial work of meeting the actual needs of students in their schools.
And you're asking to add that.
Okay. I would add that in the third paragraph. And actually, right after, please look at the mandate in place and how test refusals contain the outcome.
All right. Do we have a second to that addition? Mr. Sobchak. Okay. Any more discussion on that addition? Mr. Rubin.
Just a question for the other members of the board. Would other members of the board find it useful to table this until the next meeting, ask the committee to rework this? There's been a lot of changes proposed here tonight, so we get a final version, an actual copy, final version, with other members, and then vote on it at that point in two weeks, I guess it would be? Would other members find that useful?
Honestly, I, we're putting a lot of time into this. I think we should get this done. The legislatures leave for Albany, January. We need to finalize this. We also need to then have, get this out to all the local politicians. They may have a couple of questions, they may call us back, ask, I don't know, I don't, they leave January to go to session.
Then I have one question.
And I think, not that I want to put words in the mouth of our great district clerk, I think, based on what we're putting together, I think she can have a final draft back to us for the next meeting, that we can vote on and send off.
Oh, cool, that's what I'm asking.
All right.
I think we can handle these revisions ourselves this evening.
All right. And did we have a second to Mrs. Goodman's amendment?
I'll second.
Mr. Rubin. All right, all those in favor?
Discussion.
More discussion, okay. More discussion, Mr. Lue.
I just looked at revision two as it is, with the addition of less paragraph, and that I think is appropriate and sufficient, as far as I'm concerned. Adding more and more stuff, I think it's unnecessary. I think revision two, I wrote it, okay, with the less paragraph for revision three, is more than we need to identify as all the necessary steps. It should be stated.
Okay, Mr. Galetta was next, and Mr. Rubin, and then Mr. Sobchak. Mr. Galetta.
I concur with Mr. Lue.
Okay, Mr. Rubin.
I just would like to know from Mrs. Pedro, if she is clear on what the sense of the board is here in terms, so that she'd be able to get a letter together. Are you clear, or do you have any questions?
I'll keep it up.
Okay.
board is here in terms, so that she'd be able to get a letter together. Are you clear, or do you have any questions?
I'm keeping up with you.
Okay, Mr. Sobchak.
I have to disagree with you, Mr. Lumia. I think that's important. I think expressing a comment based on parents' decisions is important. You always seem to have the position of why parents do what they do. I think it's important that, you know, that we express the viewpoints of a specific, in a group of parents in our district. I think it's important, I don't think adding that one sentence takes anything away from, you know, the purpose of the letter, all the other revisions. I think it's a simple addition that Ms. Goodman wants to put back in. I think it's important that everyone is aware of what parents are thinking and why they do things, and they shouldn't be punished, and I just happen to disagree with you. I don't think that one sentence is that big of a deal.
Okay, Mrs. Pelton.
My concern there is that, I think that would have been something useful perhaps in the appeal. My concern is that we're now personalizing it again, and there isn't anything in their protocol that suggests that what parents think is going to designate your school as a LAPS school, and I just feel that it gets off topic and it's another issue.
Just from experience with the politicians, they tend to like the more emotional anecdotal appeal, so, since that's their voters, and that's the people they respond to and answer to. Mrs. Carruth, and then Mr. Sobchak. Mrs. Carruth.
Yes, I agree with that. I think that, I agree with Mrs. Pelton that we have to stay on topic, but when we hammer it home that way, it connects, it connects the message, and perhaps gives the represent, give representatives an opportunity to embrace it, or, you know, basically process it to something that they will want to take up as a cause.
Okay, Mr. Sobchak, I had something to say, but I think we ran out of time, so shall we ask for five minutes?
No, I'm just making a comment, it's not...
Okay, Mr. Galata, do you want five minutes more?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second? Mrs. Carruth's seconded, how many in favor? Okay, unanimous with five more minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Galata.
I would just like to make a point about the other side of this that isn't really being talked about. You know, when parents choose to opt their children out from taking the test, that's fine, they have that right, but the consequences and the results of that also impact other children, other, you know, other parents or other children, in terms of how that school is designated and what that school has to do to, um, to comply with that designation. So, there, there's another side to this that has not been talked about tonight. You know, you could say it's illogical for the state to designate a school a certain way, even though there were so many opt-outs, but a reasonable argument could be made that it's illogical for them to have that, so many opt-outs, and to expect not to be designated that way. So, there's another side to this issue. I would prefer that that sentence be left out. The majority of the board feels differently, you know, I understand that, that's fine.
Okay, is there any more comment on it before we vote on the amendment to add that sentence? Yes, Mrs. Goodman?
Yeah, just be aware that the current and soon to be gone, thankfully, Secretary of Education, John King, has had a proposal punishing districts that do not have a 95% compliance rate, and that's what that sentence refers to. That proposal is deeply unpopular, and will probably be gone after January 20. Okay? So, I don't, I mean, the reasoning behind including it is to refer to something that is deeply unpopular, and reminding the politicians that unless some give is given, unless they give something on the opt-out issue, that there are going to be a lot of unhappy voters out there. This is not just state, this is not WCSD, this is, in fact, that's the language, I suggest that the language change, to asking a district, not asking WCSD. For that reason, I think it's not besides the point, it is the entire point, because we wouldn't be on a LAP, we wouldn't be a LAPS school without opt-outs, and so we're basically being punished for the parents opting out. You know, not politically popular, put it that way.
Mrs. Pelton.
If the board wishes to have that included in the letter, I would suggest it be the second sentence in the last paragraph.
So, how... Where, that she want to put it where?
If the board wishes to include it, I'm suggesting that in the final paragraph that was added to revision two, the last paragraph in revision three, I'm suggesting that it read, "We ask your help in obtaining a waiver of the LAPS designation in our district from NICE ed," and then adding that sentence right there, followed by the furthermore.
Okay, all right.
I'll second that motion.
And we have to rewrite it?
No, first, we have to deal with the motion to add that.
Yes, to add, oh, okay, yes.
As the second sentence in the last paragraph.
As to, yes, we have to, to, okay, to vote on adding that sentence, but putting it in the last paragraph.
Second sentence.
Yes, okay. All right, would you like to read the sentence over again, Mrs. Goodman, so everyone knows exactly what sentence we're doing? Yes.
Just, if I can just interject one thing, along with the recommendation that Ms. Melton, uh, Mrs. Pelton. Great educator, by the way, Ms. Melton. The, Ms. Pelton is recommending, I think that starting this sentence with maybe indicating, although we are very well aware that many school districts do not get cited as a LAPS due to test refusals, then go into that piece to say, asking a district to create a LAP, because then what you're showing is the knowledge that, and the background that you have, that not all schools with a high test refusal rate may have this problem.
Okay, point of order. I think what we need to do is first vote on that, and then vote on adding what you said. No, we can't. Mrs. Pedro is shaking her head, and she knows.
Motion to add the sentence...
We have the motion, we already have that motion.
I second it, I second it.
All we need to do is vote on that, and then Mr. Carrion's suggestion. All right, all those in favor of adding Mrs. Goodman's sentence to the last paragraph? Unanimous.
Motion to add Mr. Carrion's sentence to precede Mrs. Goodman's.
Mrs. Goodman's addition, yes.
In the last paragraph.
And seconded by Mr. Rubin, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay.
Can I make your sentence, and then meet the location?
Okay, would you read your sentence again, Mr. Carrion?
Although...
Okay, Eddie, no, it's just... Although we are very well aware that...
Other schools are not cited.
Or have not been cited.
Have not been cited.
Have not been cited.
That other schools have not been cited.
Due to test refusals.
Due to test refusals.
Asking a school district...
Then, then, comma, asking a school district.
Yes.
To create a LAP on the basis of parents' decisions.
Any more, or you got that? Yes. But they own the letter.
Revised letter.
Can I make a motion to accept revision two with amendments?
Okay, now, Mrs. Pedro, we're now going to vote on revision two with the amendments, with the additions and amendments, the total thing. All right? Okay, and Mrs. Pelton made the motion?
I'll second.
And Mr. Rubin seconded.
I'll second Mrs. Melton's motion.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone. That worked very well. 10.01, first reading of policies. Okay, do we need to read the numbers of the policies?
Not for reading.
Okay, it's the first reading. All right, so anyone who has any questions or concerns about that, please notify Mrs. Pelton, who is the Chair of the Policy Committee. Good day to everyone.
Mrs. Melton.
You just like that name.
I do. Macy Melton.
Okay. I'll request for addition. Mr. Rubin?
I'd like to make a motion to add it to the agenda list.
Do we have a second? Mr. Sobchak, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Being here, by resolved by the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central District, that upon review of the record from the 3214 proceeding involving student 112816, the Board modifies in part the decision of the Superintendent of Schools by granting the parent's request to disregard the testimony of the second... Second district witness, and otherwise affirms the finding of guilt and penalty in all respects.
Do we have a second? Mr. Lumia, all those in favor? Mrs. Pelton, Mr. Sobchak, Mrs. Carruth, Mr. Galata, Mr. Lumia, Mr. Rubin, Mrs. Callen. Opposed? Abstained?
No, I voted...
Oh, Mrs. Goodman voted also, I didn't see her. All right, thank you. So, it was unanimous. Okay. All right. 12.01, appointment to unexpired term.
Whereas a board member vacancy was created by the resignation of former board member Amber Val effective October 17, 2016, and whereas in accordance with education law 1709 parentheses 17, 1804 parentheses 1, 2502 parentheses 6, the Board unanimously voted on October 24, 2016, to make an appointment to fill the unexpired term created by the vacancy, and whereas the Board has reviewed signed letters of interest and interviewed applicants for the position of a special board meeting held on November 9, 2016, now therefore being resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central School District does hereby appoint Babou Munasami to fill the remaining unexpired term, which will terminate when the results of the next annual election are declared on May 17, 2017.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Mrs. Pelton, all in favor? Mrs. Pelton, Mrs. Carruth, Mr. Galata, Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Goodman, Mr. Rubin, Mrs. Callen. Opposed? Mr. Sobchak. I'd just like to thank the many people who applied. It was very encouraging to see so many qualified people apply for the board position, and I hope that you will continue to keep an active interest in the school district as it is affairs. Thank you. 12.02, administration of the old projects. Is Mr. Munasami here? Please come forward.
Madam President, I take a point of order question.
Yes, Mr. Sobchak.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I was under the impression that we would be conducting a public vote for each of the nominees.
We did, we just did have a public vote.
No, not for much.
Did you want to make a nomination for another one, because we already had a majority for one? All right, now, is that all right, Mrs. Pedro? Yes, go ahead, you can, no, go ahead, it's, go ahead, you brought it up, so do it. Go ahead, make your nomination.
My nomination was Cheryl Nagitz.
All right, all those in favor? Do we have a second? No second, seven.
Okay.
All right, yes.
I, Babou Munasami, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully destroy the duties of thrusting of the Board of Education of the Wapinjor Central School District in time of the best I can.
13.01, comments from the public.
President Callen, there's an item before that.
What's that?
Oh, sorry. 12.03, board member review and sign code of ethics. He's still doing it, thank you. 13.01, comments from the public.
Hi, good evening, Maureen Bryant, speaking. Oh, good Lord. What I was sitting here listening to tonight was a disgrace, because I will tell you, it was not discussed tonight, and that were students, they're students, there are students here that are supposed to be represented, not ones where they mentioned, but the money is. You twisted everything around because you worried about funding. There's millions still do this district. Why are you folks not going after that money? But you're using the kids as bait. It's just disgusting. I have to go back to that presentation that was given with the report cards, that cohort for sixth and seventh grade, that happens to be the students that were first dumped on in school. They have been the same group of students that have been going through all the changes, and greatly affected from year to year. So, every time there's a new change, or every time that there's more confusion, or every time that there's some kind of curve in the prior year's scores, it's affecting that grouping of students. So, that's moving forward, and that's not going to change. Every time there's a new book, it faces these kids. That's where your cohort problem is. The tests and the opting out, I need to remind you what that is about. The opt-out movement is an effort to change the standards that are flawed. Does anybody understand that? Our students, our children, are sitting in classrooms...
Our students, our children, are sitting in classrooms, being tested on stuff that is illogical. Funny how you removed the word. The standards are flawed. The kids aren't telling you by their test scores that the, the standards are failing them, and nobody here is fighting for them. You're worried about your money. The student proficiencies, you can't compare them from year to year. The state just announced that they wanna stay with the same testing program so that they have something to compare from year to year, and they can't even do it. The reason is, there's errors every year, there's, the score curving is, is pathetic. There's errors within the test, there's material in the test that the kids are being questioned on that are two or three years way ahead of what was even exposed to them. Why are you not discussing that? And this letter that's supposed to go to the legislator, it represents, supposed to represent the symptom of the problem, not crybaby stuff, not that we're not gonna get our money, we need to change the standards that are flawed, sixty percent flawed, according to the New York State Commissioner of Education. Okay? It's a waste of time taking this letter and stuff and going back because it was already appealed filed. And if parents are opting out their kids, it's to change the standards. Parents want their kids to be learning, not crying. Did you see what was represented for kindergarten on the standards coming up? Did you read what those kids are doing? They're not even learning letters, sounds of letters, pronunciation of letters, but media and speaking. Why are you people not standing up for the students of this district? You're missing the vote, and if you're looking for money, go back to the state and get the millions that they've owed us for years, not because they're using it for bait, and our kids will stay to, stay not taking the test. It was fine to get the teachers off the hook, wasn't it? Let's opt the kids out so that the teachers are being evaluated, but now that we wanna do it for our kids, you got a problem with that. Don't use the children for bait, for money. We're not gonna do it, and if I have to stand outside every school with the letter to hand out to every parent, I will do it. Tell the truth.
Mrs. Callen, did I hear the three minute?
Yes.
The change.
Thank you very much, and thank you.
Uh, do we have anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, uh, do we have a mo- uh, a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Pelton, second. Mr. Lumia, all in favor? Unanimous.